All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. That's a shocker. I don't want to say it was the voice of God, because that would be...
But it was.
Waiting on MJ. Waiting on anybody? Need Chris or anybody, or no? You're good. That's right. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada. Ms. Maynard.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. Your first item is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
This is the first time set aside for public comment for items that are on today's RTC agenda. Anyone wishing to provide public comment with regards to a matter that is on today's agenda, please step forward to the microphone, state your name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Ms. Barnes.
Dorothy Barnes, I'm not for sure if it's on the agenda, but I'm here to address the issue on Water Street that the supervisors have taped posted signs on the bus stops on Water Street to move the bus stop on the 20th of this month. It's hard enough for the disabled seniors that attend the senior citizen center there and other businesses along Water Street. They've moved that stop several times over the years, and now they're talking about moving it all the way down to Lake Mead, which is gonna be very difficult for me. I've been trying to get a motorized wheelchair, the doctor ordered it, but it's not coming through. I have to walk on this roll later with a broken bone in my knee, and it's very painful to walk a distance with a bone sticking you. And then arthritis in the winter, arthritis in my knees. So please do something to stop them from moving the two stops on both sides of Water Street by the casinos. They want to remove the stops, one, I'm standing all the way down to Lake Mead, and that's quite a distance to walk. So I'm here, they've taken away everything else, my reputation, my ability to walk. Please don't take away the bus company. Please don't take away the transportation stops to make it convenient for us to go to the senior center and other important places along there. It's too hard on us, the old people that have to use those stops, please help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes, we'll certainly look into it. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment with regards to a matter on today's RTC agenda?
Hey, how you doing? Brian Heckman. About that lady in the stop, I drive that bus, and they put a stop in there, and it's not big enough for the buses they're putting in there. You got a 40 footer, you can barely, your ass is sticking out the back in traffic. The 60 footers aren't gonna fit in there at all. So, I mean, who designed the stop? Hey, I know, maybe my daughter put a little input in that, but hey, that's crazy. Come on, if you're gonna put a stop in there, make it capable for a bus to stop in it. You know? And now you got them walking at least a quarter mile down the road. There's a lot, you're keeping the one on the other side by the casino, but taking that one out? Let's figure it out, guys. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment with regards to an item on today's agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the first public comment period, and I'll turn it back over, Ms. Maynard.
Thanks, Chairman. The next item is to approve the agenda, it's in order and ready for your approval.
All right. Any comments on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Chairman, members of the commission. The next item is to receive the CEO report.
Well, before we hear today's CEO report, I'd like to recognize our illustrious CEO, Mem J. Maynard, who was selected as one of the most respected leaders in 2023 by Nevada Business Magazine. She's knowledgeable, personable, and cares deeply for our community, as was recognized, and you can see the caliber of folks that was in this group, including current and former governor of our state. So let's give a warm round of applause for our CEO.
Thank you, Chairman. It's an honor to serve the community and to serve all of you, so thank you. So I would like to begin today's CEO report by addressing the unspeakable tragedies that have occurred recently in our beloved community. As a proud alum of UNLV and someone who was married to a first responder for many years, these two events are absolutely heartbreaking. The RTC pledges are in wavering support and commitment to our partners in Nevada State Police and UNLV. We stand together with you in solidarity as we heal from these courageous incidents. Also, you know, again, I think we're looking pretty good for '30. This last year, we celebrated the 30th anniversary of traditional public transit, and now we're excited to mark RTC's paratransit's 30th birthday. Since we began operating on December 5th, 1994, RTC Paratransit has played a crucial role in providing accessible transportation for individuals with disabilities, empowering them to gain access to employment, healthcare, education, and social activities. As a service provides reliable and convenient transportation for those with mobility challenges, our goal is to continue to promote inclusivity and foster independence for all. So we are excited to celebrate RTC's paratransit's achievements and growth, and hope you'll follow along to share stories, experiences, and celebrations throughout the year. And we certainly have to, you know, thank all of the paratransit drivers. They do the heavy lifting, they work very hard on behalf of our community. Could not do this job without the paratransit drivers, the mechanics. Right now, they're employees of MB, but they are amazing, so many thanks to them. And this month, we would like to recognize TransDev Revenue Trainer LaShawna Jamerson. And to present this item, we have our video with Deputy CEO Chris Cole.
Thank you, MJ. We are thrilled to spotlight LaShawna Jamerson, Revenue Trainer with TransDev. LaShawna has been an operator since 2001 and just recently took on a new role as a revenue trainer, teaching new hires, customer service skills, and also how to run a bus with a farebox system and how to navigate situations with passengers. LaShawna has never had a negative experience with a passenger. Her patience, kindness, and good attitude makes her a great trainer. Her coworkers say they even look up to her, and she leads by example. Thank you for showing up and growing up with the transit system for 22 years and servicing our community. Now let's go surprise LaShawna. You LaShawna?
I'm LaShawna.
Oh, boy. How you been? My name's Chris Cole, so I'm a Deputy CEO with RTC. On behalf of MJ Maynard and the Board of Commissioners, I want to give you this. Crystal Bus Award. For everything that you do, for the outstanding work that you're doing, just who you are. I've heard a lot of good things about you.
Thank you so much, I work hard.
That's what I've heard, that's what I've heard, so.
Thank you, guys. I want to thank TransDev for nominating me, and I want to thank everybody here at TransDev for giving me this award. I really appreciate it, because I have worked very hard on this in being nice to all the passengers, and happy holidays to you guys, thank you so much. That's real sweet.
Is that LaShawna back there? Can you have me stand up?
Another award like this, starting here at TransDev. Thank you, guys, for nominating me for it, I really appreciate it. Thank you. And RTC.
Yay, LaShawna!
Okay, I just, I have to tell you, at City Hall, we got phone calls on how well-received, well-respected you are. You're remarkable, and you really have the support of your entire group and your profession. It was really remarkable. I think it was the first in the 12 years I've been sitting in that chair. So congratulations, and thank you so much for all that you do, you're an inspiration.
Thank you.
Great. And we have another recognition, we also want to recognize another outstanding employee from our contractor, American Graffiti, Lead Maintenance Technician Alex Felix. And so American Graffiti is one of the companies that keeps our shelters clean, and so I'm gonna turn it over, again, video from Deputy CEO Chris Cole.
Thank you, MJ. This month, we are excited to recognize Alex Felix, Lead Maintenance Technician for American Graffiti, one of our transit shelter cleaning contractors. Alex has been with American Graffiti since the company opened 22 years ago. He is dedicated, tenacious, and thoughtful. He leads a team of 11 technicians who clean and repair our transit shelters throughout our system, making sure they are ready for commuters. Alex can be trusted with any task, making sure no details are missed. Alex, thank you for your commitment of 22 years with American Graffiti and for your relentless work ethic. Now let's go surprise Alex and thank him for his hard work keeping our transit system clean and a good repair for our customers. Let's go. I'm looking for Alex Felix. Well, Alex, my name is Chris Cole, I'm a Deputy CEO with RTC. On behalf of MJ Maynard and the Board of Commissioners for RTC, I want to thank you for all the outstanding work that you do. I want to give you the Crystal Bus Award.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Another year for the company, appreciate it, and just keep working and do my best.
Ever since the company's been here, and it says a lot, it says a lot about who you are. So I just want to thank you.
Appreciate that.
All right, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so thank you very much to the Board of Commissioners, and appreciate the opportunity, and I'll be here for many years to come.
Alex, stand up, let's give you a round of applause. Thanks so much for your doing. Back to you, MJ.
Okay, so we have some exciting news to share about our progress with grant applications. This month, we were notified that we are receiving a $1.5 million grant from the United States Department of Transportation to update how Southern Nevada roadways are designed and built. This grant will allow the RTC to update existing roadway design criteria with a focus on safety and equity, with the intent of reducing fatalities and serious injuries for all users. In addition to using best practices and proven safety strategies, the RTC will work collaboratively with each of your jurisdictions throughout this process. Again, I've just got a nod to our grants team, they are amazing. They go after every single grant, and I'm real proud of them. And lastly, we have a quarterly update from our Metropolitan Planning Organization. Regional Planning Manager Deb Burden will present today's report.
Thanks so much, MJ. This quarterly update from the MPO will focus on our work in regional planning. So as shared through past updates that have been provided by Andrew Kelman, the MPO's primary role is guiding transportation planning and also selecting projects that will be receiving federal transportation dollars. More recently, the Biden administration really broadened our role and provided additional resources to align transportation with community housing, economic development projects, climate change goals, and more. This work is done through the MPO's regional planning team. Our work really falls in three primary areas. First, we really focus on implementing some of the new federal policies. Secondly, we focus on providing technical assistance in areas where there's an identified gap. And lastly, we lead regional planning around topics that were previously led by the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition, or SNRPC. This includes facilitation of the Regional Open Space and Trails Work Group, working with SNWA to develop population projections, and at the heart of our work is administration of the Southern Nevada Strong Regional Plan. Southern Nevada Strong really provides the only forum to talk about how we grow in support of our rapidly growing population. Without uncoordinated growth, there's a lot of risk of more heat, more traffic, unaffordable housing, and unsustainable water use. The Southern Nevada Strong Plan really envisions a more sustainable, economically resilient future for our region. The plan was developed back in 2012, actually by the city of Henderson, led the effort on behalf of the SNRPC, since that organization does not have dedicated planning staff. It was really a historic moment in our history in planning. It brought together over 70,000 people, the largest effort of its time, community leaders, to really figure out how we wanted to grow and what strategies we as a community were willing to take to get there. In 2015, the plan was adopted by the SNRPC, as well as all of its member entities, and the RTC was identified as the agency to administer that plan long-term. This administration role includes a couple of things. We provide technical assistance, we work to promote the plan and its implementation, and we also work to convene the Southern Nevada Strong Steering Committee. This is a group that includes members from actually all of the agencies here today, as well as nonprofit partners and university staff, all working together to guide implementation of the plan and also provide key direction to staff on how we can best support your work. The plan includes a couple of regional goals that were identified in 2012, and these still seem to be very much relevant today. There was a need identified to improve our economic competitiveness and diversification, also to increase transportation choices, invest in complete communities really with an emphasis on reinvesting in our existing neighborhoods, and then also really building up our capacity for implementation. The plan includes over 300 strategies, I know that's a lot, and a lot of that work is actually led by local agencies. We also rely on other partners, like in economic development, water, education, that are outside of the expertise area of the MPO. There are lots of great examples of implementation of the plan, especially in downtown areas and in the medical district. This is an illustration of the planned vision that was developed back in 2012. The circles on the map show those downtown activity centers that were intended to really be the focus of development. Those activity centers were envisioned to be connected by the purple lines on the map. Those represent streets with wider sidewalks, better bike lanes, and enhanced transit. This next map shows a comparison for that growth vision that we just reviewed on the previous slide with our current land use projection. This is a consolidation of all of the land use plans from the county and cities, all in one. From this, we can see that planned growth is really focused on the outer edge of our community. Additionally, there seems to be an increased focus on single-family housing that you can see in the yellow. This pattern of growth has potential for continued challenges around housing affordability and supply, especially as we try to add another 700,000 people to our community. So to address these challenges and to really hear from our community, we partnered with the Nevada Environmental Justice Coalition to host a series of listening sessions. These listening sessions were really intended to hear from the community on what those current challenges were, so we can address them through our work. Let's have a listen.
Southern Nevada Strong is our regional plan, right? So it brings together all of the different local jurisdictions together to develop strategies around housing and transportation specifically. This year, we're gonna be talking about additional issues pertaining the environment, such as water and heat. Effort is intended to be participatory, right? So this is our first kind of like outreach and engagement event.
Definitely a lot of community building that a lot of people don't have in their communities. How it's affected the populace at large, especially for those the most vulnerable.
How often do you use public transportation?
My family is an immigrant family, we came here from El Salvador in 1987. At that time, it was a lot cleaner and nicer, and it wasn't as crowded. And I've watched the city get busier and busier, and I've watched the air get dirtier and dirtier over the years. And I'm really worried, because I have a two-year-old daughter, and her lungs are still developing, so I'm really concerned with air pollution. I'm also concerned for my mom, who has had breast cancer. She survived breast cancer twice, and our family home was on Charleston in 95. I could see the freeway from my house, so, you know, we're exposed to a lot of pollution, and so my mom had breast cancer twice, and now there's research coming out saying there's a link between air pollution and breast cancer. I really worry about our Latino and African-American communities. My husband is African-American, and so my daughter represents both demographics. And I've lived it, I see it, and I, you know, I want Las Vegas to do better, I want Nevada to do better. I want my daughter to grow up without asthma and COPD, like a lot of the other kids in the neighborhood have.
So I actually attended one of these listening sessions and repeatedly heard phrases like "we are in a crisis", hearing firsthand from folks, sharing their struggles with paying bills, really finding escape from the extreme heat, finding a place to live that's affordable, was really grounding for me personally and really provided more inspiration to continue what is really, really hard work. So given that there are so many challenges that we are facing as a community, and the plan that was developed, it's been 10 years, the Southern Nevada Strong Steering Committee asked us to do an update to this regional plan. So initial outreach has been completed through one-on-one meetings, focus groups, we did a housing roundtable, industry meetings, really gathering input from about 500 or so people, really, to get started. This input helped us to really hone in on where we could, where we should direct our energy. And so where that pointed us to was really around infill. And so our first step will be to identify those underutilized parcels, things like empty parking lots, decaying commercial centers that are existing in underserved neighborhoods and elsewhere, to really understand where are those opportunities for infill development. Then we will use that baseline data to, and combined with an analysis of our long-term housing needs and job opportunities to match those parcels with the locations of housing. Next, we will identify, using a tool called scenario planning, that was actually also used in the original plan development, will imagine how growth could occur, that may be in existing neighborhoods, on the fringe, beyond, or some combination, to really use that as a policy tool for the RTC Board and other bodies to evaluate how the community wants to go moving forward, evaluating choices like the level of emissions, how people will travel, where schools will be located, really providing a forum to provide those choices. And then our hope is that this plan, the original plan, it was great, it included a lot of detail. And so what we're trying to do is really hone in on a couple of actionable strategies and really make this plan update more parcel-based. We are also continuing to participate in other regional planning efforts. Through the passage of Senate Bill 247, that you may have been tracking, the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition is actually no longer mandated. And so in November, this body met and determined that it would like to continue to convene, but under a different name, the Southern Nevada Council of Governments. So we, the next step for that group is really to pursue an inter-local agreement that would clarify how the new agency would function. In our role at the MPO, we are really engaging with that group to ensure that we're not duplicating efforts. There's a lot of work in regional planning that can occur, and we intend to work together. So we also intend to continue to use our dedicated staff and our MPO planning dollars to support the regional planning work that we've outlined today. So I know you are the RTC Board, you're also the MPO Board, and in this really important role, you have an opportunity to advocate for regionalism, to guide more sustainable growth, and direct transportation funding decisions. Through the plan update, we really look forward to re-engaging your role in regional planning, and we look forward to working together to make Southern Nevada even stronger. With that, I'm eager to hear your thoughts on regional planning, or answer any questions.
Thanks so much, we appreciate all you're doing. Questions, comments from the board? Brian, Councilman, sorry.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the presentation. I have been engaged with the efforts over the last 10 years, and I think it's desperately needed within our community. I just wanted to comment and see if I can ask for more information around the infill development piece. Most of the area that I represent is, would be considered infill. And the city of Las Vegas, in one of our emerging issues with the council, asked our city team to come up with ideas and thoughts around how we leverage the government's responsibilities and roles with some of those infill pieces, especially those that are posing blight or posing challenges for the surrounding areas. So I would love to continue to work with you on that, if you could send me whatever you got, and then I'm gonna connect you with the right people at the city.
Yeah, we'd be happy to, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Shaw?
I want to thank you for this presentation. It's critical to our community. I think the Southern Nevada Strong grant that was granted to start this is to date still the largest planning grant ever issued in the state of Nevada. It has done wonders for planning and guiding the municipalities. It's lifted up the standard for everyone in this valley, and it's critical that we continue with it and plan for the future and give guidelines to all the municipalities, so that it's a coordinated effort. So thank you, and let's continue to do that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much for the presentation. Oh, sorry, Councilman Brown?
Yeah, just real quick, yes, I was looking at this presentation with a lot of anticipation, because of course, you know, downtown North of Vegas was actually picked as one of the focal points. And so I'm happy to say here that a few years later, we're very happy to have the city of Las Vegas downtown to be right here on the precipice of something really big. We've already started some things that are big. We'll have our very first Medical Center for Women that also include imaging. And Southern Nevada Strong, you know, did a lot to help, you know, guide us in this redevelopment effort, so I just wanted to, of course, applaud everybody who was part of this, the people who planned it, our city leaders, our regional leaders here who conceived our Southern Nevada Strong. And like the councilman, I like to have also a report, so I can go back to my redevelopment agency and just compare our notes here, if that'd be okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Deb, great job. And it really is, you know, we work directly with your teams. It's your, it's your planning team, your economic development staff that really do all the good work, so we appreciate that. And that concludes your CEO report.
Very good.
Okay, the next item is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report from Tracy Larkin-Thomason.
Good morning, everybody. I'd like to start off real quickly, just to acknowledge, just briefly acknowledge the tragedy that happened about two weeks ago with the loss of the two Nevada state troopers in the line of duty on our highways. It just increases the reasons why we have to really be more vigilant on some of our safety initiatives. And moving into, we're very, very excited to announce that End Up was awarded a $3 billion grant by FRA, the largest certainly in our department, it's the largest in the state. But I also want to really acknowledge... But I also want to really acknowledge, I personally have been working on some form of this for over 12 years. But we didn't get here without all of you partners. We didn't get out here without Tina and MJ and all of the people along here. So I really want to thank you, because this is, speaking of a regional effort, this was a regional effort to get it here. So moving on to that, it merited the president coming into town to announce it, and then the entire delegation, and that happened last week. So extremely very exciting, and a whole different realm of opening up rail in Nevada, really expanding it. One of the things when we were talking with different officials in DC as it was progressing is like, one of the reasons why it should come here, besides the economic development, is if you're serious about expanding rail in Nevada, or in the country, period, you need to start coming inland. And Vegas is a great place to start with it. And this has already spurred initial discussions of where it can go from here. So, very exciting news for us. For those who aren't that familiar with it, Brightline is scheduled to go from Las Vegas down to, into California, into Rancho Cucamonga. That's a great name for a station. But then it will, it then connects with the metro to take you downtown into Los Angeles and the Union Station. A couple of next steps, so Brightline West now, it is a $12 billion project, so they need to secure the rest of the funding in that. They have some administration actions with the right-of-way occupancy permit. They're at 60% design, so they need to finish this. After the first of the year, they will be looking for the rest of the project funding, initiate the design work and fill-in. They certainly have been working on that for quite some time. They're already into motion. On NDOT side, we enter into a grant agreement with FRA, so it'll take a few months to actually get that finalized. We have the subrecipient agreement with Brightline West. That's because basically, we are a pass-through and an oversight for this project. Issue the right-of-way occupancy permit and then get the augmentation and the construction consultant agreement in there. They are hoping to, actually, the very aggressive schedule is they want to be open in time for the 2028 Los Angeles Olympics. And with that, they're looking at potentially doing a groundbreaking in about May of next year. So tentative timelines, very much subject to change. Hopefully, coming closer instead of farther away. But very exciting news, and I, again, I thank all of you for your support, and we'll look forward for continued support on it. Next, what I talk about, we had Centennial Bowl ribbon cutting lately. This was also a long time coming. This is the product of actually six, the culmination of six different projects that started in 2009. We held it last Monday on December 4th, and that was basically overseen by the Governor Lombardo, the city of Las... Sorry, thank you for letting me know. Is that better? All right, thank you. The special thanks to FHWA, the Federal Highway Administration, Clark County, Las Vegas RTC, Las Vegas Paving, the contractor, and many others who worked on this for over a decade. This project actually was a culmination, like I said, was over six phases, beginning in 2009. There are 20 new bridges, including the second-longest in Nevada, the widening and realignment of several roads, two new local interchanges, improved surface treatment networks, a full interchange of US 95 and Clark County 215, increased capacity on 95, four miles of multi-use trails, and I also, a special thanks goes to the city of Las Vegas for that. And then nearly three new trail-specific bridges and enhanced Kyle Canyon access. And we also want to say that over this, there was over 1,000 direct and indirect jobs. Next, we finally received approval from the federal government to actually start putting up the I-11 designation signs. So we will see that after the beginning of the year. It will, and then it'll continue up on the 95 corridor. It now goes to Kyle Canyon. So the finish of the Centennial Bowl ribbon cutting actually marked the upper limits of the current I-11. And as we start on that project, we'll also do a lot of public outreach, because it will, it takes precedence over the I-15 and the US 95 signs. So we just want to make sure that the public is ready when they see the changes. And that brings us into the next phase of I-11. So the I-11 is now looking at the feasibility study from Kyle Canyon up to Mercury. We've had a virtual public meeting on there from November 15th. It is still open to the end of this week. There was an in-person meeting held on November 30th. And we're looking at the potential alternatives improvements. What we need to do is bring up US 95 to interstate standards. That includes control of access, which will include like, where do we need to do some interchanges, all those type of things to make sure that it meets the standards, so we can adopt it as an interstate. The next one is, we just awarded recently the I-15 South project from Sloan Road to north of Warm Springs Road. This construction will begin in January, $73 million project, and it will widen I-15 from six to eight general-purpose lanes between Sloan Road and St. Rose Parkway, widen and restripe I-15 from six to 10 general-purpose lanes between St. Rose Parkway and Blue Diamond Road, and add sound walls near the residential areas to the corridor and resurface the bridges and pavements in the area. So we're actually looking to get that, really pushing that to get that ahead of getting Brightline in the corridor down there. So we're trying to coordinate the different facets of construction there. So last, sad for me, good for them, we say goodbye to two of the deputies of NDOT. I think you have been familiar, many of you are familiar with them, with Seen Darren Tedford and Jeff LaRue. Both of them, that's about 60 years of experience between them. They were most recently the Deputy Director of Administration and Operations Maintenance. So we wish them well. And then on the other side, now we do welcome. These were appointed yesterday. Mario Gomez is now the new Deputy Director of Operations and Maintenance. He was most recently the district engineer here in Las Vegas, and he has been working here in Vegas for the last 23 years. Sondra Rosenberg, many of you also are very familiar with her through her work in planning. She has been the Assistant Director of Planning for the last nine years, and she now assumes a role that Darren had as a Deputy Director of Planning and Administration. And I apologize that we weren't able to bring them, introduce them today, but they just announced yesterday, and schedules were a little hard to change. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Director. Any questions or comments? Yep, sure.
So with respect to the railroad, are we looking at improvements to I-15 as we do the railroad? Because it's going to go right down the middle, right?
I didn't hear the first part of it.
I'm sorry. With respect to the railroad from here to Cucamonga, are we looking at improving I-15, maybe adding a lane on both sides as we do the railroad?
There is some increased capacity along I-15 in some areas. I just mentioned the part of Sloan. The railroad itself will, is mainly in the center line, mostly in California and also in Nevada. It's the center line until it hits Sloan. At Sloan, it'll go to the east side and then continue up to where they'll have their depot at, like Warm Springs near Blue Diamond.
I understand that, but I'm thinking from California border down to Barstow, could we add another lane in those areas where we only have two lanes as we're doing this? Because we have to redo a lot of those bridges anyway. I'm not sure that's your decision, but hopefully you can raise that issue.
Not in California. We have worked very hard to get the third lane and working on the shoulders down to the agricultural stations in California. What it really does is move the bottleneck past our boundary into California. But no, we do not have jurisdiction over the California roads.
Well, if you talked to the California governor, would you at least mention that we ought to, as we're doing the railroad, add another lane to?
I will be happy to add that.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? I'll just note, I met with Lacey Tisler earlier this week, and she's really doing a great job of trying to identify the NDOT roads here in town where there are traffic concerns and pedestrian and bicycle safety concerns. And looking forward to collaboration between NDOT and RTC on potentially reducing fatalities on NDOT roads, which are, just because of their nature, the whitest roads here in town and often where a lot of the pedestrian and bicycle fatalities are. All right, with that, then I'll turn it back over to Ms. Jones.
The next item is to approve your consent agenda, which consists of items 5 through 50, can be taken one motion.
Right, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
That was a vigorous motion, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye. And you have to excuse me, I'm showing off a little bit here.
Motion carries.
All right, thanks. The next item, Agenda 51 deals with legal matters. As there is no legal matters to discuss this month, we can move on to your last agenda item, which is to conduct your final citizens' participation period.
Very good. This is the second tide set aside for public comment. Anyone having, wishing to provide public comment with regards to any matter before the Regional Transportation Commission, please step forward to the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes. We're going to start with Ms. Jones.
Good morning, my name is Shelley Jones. I'm here every month, and there's three things I'm going to address. The first is Silver Ride, I love that program. However, you need to trash the GPS. Why? Because the GPS took me, not here, but it ended up taking me to a residential area, to a field, and said, "You reached your destination?" I don't think so! I'm supposed to be at 500 Grand Central Parkway, the government building, here, for the meeting. Thank God the driver listened to me, because I do know my way around here, in this town, and I took her to a better way. The third thing is, my heart was breaking when Ms. Barnes was begging you guys to do something. She shouldn't have to walk a quarter-mile to a bus stop. It should be there for the seniors to be available to them. There's no reason why they have to walk a quarter-mile in horrible weather here in Las Vegas. Shame on you guys for not helping her. And the bus stops need to be available for the buses to pull in. You're asking for an accident to happen with the bus rear end sticking out. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Next speaker.
Good morning, I'm Stanley Smalls with ATU International. I'm coming to speak on behalf of our newly members at Silver State that voted the ATU in 52 to 10. Since such time, there's still been a lot of issues. I came to you guys last month and talked about one of the biggest safety concerns we have on that property, and that's unauthorized vehicles. They made it clear that, MJ, your management staff is approving it. And I find it unfair that the union president, the vice president, and the board member of that property don't have that same access. I'm sure when I finished talking, Silver State had come behind me to refute it, but I don't think they should waste their time, because the pictures are right here. I was on the property last night. As you can see, she pulled her vehicle, her personal vehicle, on the yard and parked it in the gas station bus bay, where buses are constantly moving. And when I, we was there for about four hours last night. Not a marksman came by or anything. When I approached the shack to ask, "Why is this vehicle constantly being allowed on the yard?", they made it clear that she's telling them that she's offloading items. Don't take my word for it, just ask the marksman. It's either they're ignoring your own safety policy, or she's lying. Both of them are dangerous. She's speeding, she's speeding on the yard as well. One of our biggest concerns is our members are being faced with retaliation now for coming forward. We had a young lady that was just fired after we won the election, because she complained about sexual harassment, right? They told her, and we got the recording, so they told her to come and meet to give her statement about sexual harassment, only to be told she couldn't be represented by the union president and a board member. She was denied her basic winegartner rights. And she was subsequently terminated for falsifying documents when she was told to come to the office to talk about a claim that she made against sexual harassment. These are the things that's going on with your contractor. And I'm just, I'm pleading with you guys to get them in order. Because, again, like I said, nobody should be fearful of joining the union or forming the union. They made a decision. Me and the president and our board member, we went over to the office to talk to them, only to be greeted with an email from their attorney that we came into their office with a hostile manner. But I guarantee you, if you listen to the audio, Mr. Fernandez shook our hand and said, "Okay, thank you", and took the letters that we provided them, asking them to stop switching members from yard to yard. This is a way of retaliation, because the vote was so large, they're able to identify the 10 people that voted no. So they're shifting people that live on this side of town to the Simmons Yard, to the Sunset Yard as a form of retribution. That's not right, and it has to stop.
Thank you. If we can have the booth set the clock to three minutes, please. Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm going to be a speaker too, in case I need more time. I'm Brian Haglin, been here before. It's my daughter, Kalia. I'll introduce her after my three are up. I'd said I'd be back if I have issues, and yeah, I have issues, man. Yeah, the bus just isn't showing up. It ain't there. Run 1834 at 226. Six months has not left, you know? It's less than 10% it's left Bonneville Transit Center. Believe me, I'm just making this up. I don't know, look on your computers at the paperwork, see what it is. Someone has to be compliant here, all right? This bus does not leave Bonneville Transit Center. I'm sitting there for 30 minutes yesterday. 30 minutes I was sitting there. This is ridiculous. Every day, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. My relief shows up at 3 o'clock, they got excuses. Hey, shuttle car. Oh, well, shit, man, you got new cars in, come on. You got rental cars, get a car, six months. This is day one. Yesterday was my last day of the work week. It's still happening. This is BS, man, come on. Yeah, I mean, all the announcements kind of messed up my ADA here, you know? I kind of got a little confused what I really wanted to say, but this is ridiculous, man. And this company is doing this to us, you know? They were unprepared coming in when they took this over. You know, it's, they had it for a few months, they knew this was, they had the contract. You gave it to them, they bid on it. They knew what they were doing. You know, the multi-billion-dollar corporation. Just ridiculous, man. Totally ridiculous. Yeah, responsibilities, commitments, you bid on something, you know what you're going to do, do it. God, you're professionals, we're professionals. You put me in any bus, I'm going to figure it out. It ain't going to take me six months and I'm still freaking, don't know what I'm doing. You know, it's, come on, guys. Look at the paperwork, the reviews, reports. You guys, I mean, where do ones suffer? The drivers are suffering here, you know? Just incompetence, man. And I'm just one driver showing up here. Believe me, there's, we got 1,000 of them, okay? I told them from day one in a meeting, they had a meeting, I'm like, you know, 30 minutes late, I'm going to go in overtime here. Kalia, you want to make your announcement? If you guys don't mind, she's going, yeah. This is Kalia Haglin, this is my daughter, she got her three minutes now. Want me to speak for you? Okay. All right, I got this now, I'm going to speak for her, man. You know, I told them at a meeting, month one, I'm getting overtime, getting, you're forcing me to work an extra hour or two every week because of incompetence. You can't figure out how to send someone out. You got two to five people behind dispatch window. Oh, yeah, well, let me, you know? You got a sheet, mark it off, it's highlighted, that bus taken. There's no reason I should be giving a bus that's already been taken. You got a highlighter. You got three people driving around the yard with radios. Communication, that's all that it is, man. This is an easy job. I just drive straight, look in my mirrors, hey, is it safe? Okay, I can go now. Oh, come on in, let me lower it for you, get on the bus. Let's go, don't, don't, don't set me up for failure. You know, I'm sitting at Bonneville, and people are like, "Hey, man, it's 100 degrees, supervisor, you're inside, keep it cool." "Hey, radio, not answering me." You know, this week was cool, there was a radio lady that was there with Keolis, and, you know, a minute, "Hey, how you doing, what's up?" "All right, yeah, response." Sometimes you don't get that, they don't even respond back to you. You know, check the reports, we're telling you this. Every driver is, we're talking about... talking about this and telling you guys. It's ridiculous, man. Quit wasting our time with this. We're professionals. We'll step in the bus, do it. You know, you're making us look bad, is what it is. It's sad, man. But I, the story I was getting to is, I told them, I go, "Hey, I'm getting an hour or two overtime a week, and I really don't want it, you know? My time's more important than this money I'm getting." But you add up 1,000 drivers, you give them all this overtime, that's, it's going to equal like 5 million in a year, okay? Are you willing to, you got that lost bill in and all this money you got? No, the CEOs, no. Kevin, no, no, we didn't get that bill. I'm like, well, figure it out. Six months later, it ain't figured out. Come on. It's not figured out. Just relieve me on time, you know? Tell me to take the bus drive down the road, they'll meet me. But you have passengers that are waiting there, and it's ridiculous. Come see, I told you, 2:26 PM Boulder Highway, be there. Just look at it. Look at, you ain't even got to leave your office, look on the camera. Hey, who's in charge here? Look at the camera, man. See, people are standing there. Buses ain't moving. Two buses behind me. It's ridiculous. That's all I got to say, man. I don't want to come back here. You're wasting my time here, me come back if you ain't taking care of the problem. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Haglin. Thank you. If we can maintain order. If we can have the next speaker, please. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? If you can go ahead and line up so we can make sure we know how many.
My name is William Lynn. Obviously, there's no way to clean up after that. That's the simple truth. They can't pay us on time. Some drivers don't even get their check last week. But you mad about 59 seconds somebody coming in late, you sending them home? Sending everybody home to the point where drivers that are trying to get into work ain't getting to work? So now that's service. That's not just drivers. At that point, it also becomes the passengers that we're carrying. Buses are not running. They're not. They're all over the place. And now the drivers are like, you just seen. And also they're like, oh, well, RTC don't care, because they're getting their money back. That's what they worried about. They ain't worried about our service. So what it looks like at this point. When they run an extra service on routes that they charging you for, when there ain't even full service running out there, that don't make no sense to me. So when people are sitting at the 217 for an hour cussing people, marksmen, the supervisors, y'all come, tell them something. Ain't no bus coming. What else you want to tell them? These are the facts. Meanwhile, you got a bus that's running extra service out in the middle of nowhere, 122, that's saying it's on the 217 or whatever it's saying it is. They wondering why these drivers are upset. Like I said, if you can't get the person they pay on time, you worried about them catching a 62nd miss out? Oh, they need to show up, or we're sending them all home? Not a problem, send them all home. Now we got no service, great. You didn't pay them, you're making them mad, and now you got no service, and you still don't care. Like you said, this has been six months. If I didn't, if I didn't show up to do my job for six months, would I still be here? This is this.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Sandra Adams, Vice President, ATU 1637. Speaking of what Billy was talking about, Thanksgiving holiday, we had several drivers that did not get their holiday pay. You know, and their excuse was, "Well, you didn't work today, your scheduled day." That's not what the contract says. They don't follow the contract. So people want their money. When we work, we want our money on time. So we got to wait three more days to get our pay. Okay, it's been over two months now. They've taken PTO hours from us that they should not have taken. I've been trying to get an answer from Kevin, and I have yet to receive it. I go to him every month, ask him, "How are you going to get these people their hours back? These are our hours that we earned." And they just take them when they get ready. But no answers to when we're going to get them back, or how we're going to get them back. It's just like everything, there's notes taken, but nothing happened. No actions at all. You know, like I say, we got, they've still got these payroll problems, we got dispatcher problems. The way they're running the place is just a total mess. Somebody needs to step in and do something, take care of it.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Next speaker.
Good morning, Sophia Major, driver from the Simmons Yard. Problem is we're having is these buses. I go to work at 3 o'clock in the morning. Half the time, there's no heat. In the summer, there's no air. I don't know who y'all think driving them buses like that. I am 150 pounds lighter, and I'm always cold. But it does no good when you can't get a bus to work. And they give you another bus that does the same thing. Go to TransDev's security, safety and security, they don't know why that we can't get appropriate buses out there. I had to take a day off for work because I got ate up on the bus, on my legs. And then they got mad because I requested a new uniform. I'm not putting it in my car. I don't know what it is. Something's got to be done with this company. It's over the top. I thought MV was bad. Nah, I'd rather stayed in the bed with that devil. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, I'm Carolyn Higgins. I wasn't going to come up here and say anything because I feel the same way. There's nothing being done. My main concern right now are the buses. The buses are horrible. They're inconsistently running. I spent an hour and a half to almost two hours trying to get a bus down to the yard, which I should not have ever driven, and it was a stop engine. Like, only to hear maintenance tell me that it's very expensive to tow a bus. We're out there getting beat up every day mentally. Not only are you having to worry about the bus getting you from one bus stop to the other, you're worrying about, what is this person looking strange for? What is he going to do? There was a driver who had experienced just this past week of seeing someone in a camouflage uniform, looking very kind of weird. She called to find out, or to let people know, and there was nothing ever done. And I'm hearing vigilant in the Safety Committee. I enjoy being in that committee. I really applaud the new safety guy, because I do see differences with marksmen. But we need to see some differences with the buses. If we're getting all this federal granted money, we need to get new buses. My day starts early morning, trying to figure out what bus did I have, or do I have. And when I get in there and I'm driving down Cheyenne, I say, "Okay, no lights." Because right now, they're asking us to take those buses out with both check engine lights on. And that time that I took mine out, it's a stop engine. So we don't have to, we're not mechanics. I'm not a mechanic. I'm only doing what I've learned to do through the years. My dad always told me, "When you see something illuminated on that car, you get it checked out." And that's what I'd like for you guys to do. Get it checked out, get rid of the bus, and get us some equipment that we can work with. Because it ain't even us. It's your passengers, the city, the public. One guy said, "You know, I don't understand why they're trying to..." A passenger. He says, "They're trying to grab and bring all this entertainment to Las Vegas, but they can't get this right." Because he is going to work, trying to go two hours early so that he can get there on time. But it's the buses, and they do blame us for it. But I'm done. Like I said, I wasn't going to come up here, but it's getting too hard to do this job with what you guys are providing us to do it with. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you. Again, good morning. Chair Justin Jones and members. Alida Dupree for the record, she and her, with Team Folds. Still at it, still riding buses. Seven years doing this app. I get my monthly bus pass. It's kind of like direct deposit. I got paid a few days ago, on time. I have direct deposit. Been doing direct deposit for over 30 years. It works. And mostly I ride on Sahara. I missed the earlier public comment. Thank you for doing Title VI and the new bus contract that we're doing options instead of committing to buying 100 natural gas buses without options. We have to hedge our bets, because if the electric and hydrogen buses don't come through, at least we can hedge and buy what we need so our fleet doesn't age out and get 15, 16, 17 years old. So unlike some other agencies I've seen, I think this is probably the best options-based bus contract I've seen. So thank you for that. Appreciate it. And I'm looking forward to hearing more about the new fare payment and what that will look like. And I haven't been away. I hope to go away soon, but I think of my time in New York, when I went on the buses and that famed transportation system called Subway, and I used my phone, and it took $1.45 out for each trip. They do it for open payment for reduced fare. They figured it out. It really works. I showed a person close to me, who's older than me, how to do the Omni for the subway, and they texted me and told me that it worked. And I said, "Of course, I'm not surprised it worked." I wish I would have been there to have seen the expression on this person's face, riding the subway together. But I guess I'll settle for that text message. That's a good thing. But how do we build our RTC going forward into the future? It's not easy for me being here sometimes. A person with profound disabilities getting up here and speaking. And I think my first RTC meeting I spoke at was maybe in '09, I think. It's been a long time. I've been, I've lost count of how many of these meetings I've done. When I'm here in Las Vegas, I try to come to these meetings, because they're important. So thank you for listening to me and keeping the system running. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Dupree. Next speaker.
Good morning, Francisco Ortega, O-R-T-E-G-A. I wasn't going to speak either, but you know, I was sitting here, and I see a banner that you have up here in front that says, "Together for the Better." And one of the things underneath there says, "Accountability." Now, every month, you have drivers coming up here pleading about safety, pleading about coaches, you know, and everything that goes on out there with them. And there's no accountability, whether it's from the company, or whether it's from the chairmans. I mean, everybody's standing up here, sitting stone-cold-faced, just looking at everybody. And they're constantly giving you complaints, and it's, you know, "Hey, we'll look into it." Nothing gets looked into, okay? I'm a part of many, many meetings. I deal with Tom. Tom has stepped up when it comes to safety and security, and yes, he is stepping forward. Chris has stepped up, said, "Hey, this is what we need to do." And we're constantly throwing these things out, but if we're not getting the support from the chairs that's holding TransDev accountable, but yet TransDev holds the drivers accountable, holds mechanics accountable. So it's time to start checking the company as well, to hold them accountable to the things that they said that they will do in their contract, okay? Simple is getting people paid on time. You know, you keep hearing it today, you've heard it multiple times today, getting paid on time. People, you know, we want to make service, and it doesn't, nothing gets done until the bottom line is affected, right? Until something goes on that the strip, you know, if we had a Formula One, right, we had F1 here. You know, if something was going to affect that, then that's when everybody's starting to get held accountable. Because that's affecting the bottom line for you guys in transit, for the money coming into the city. That's when something gets held accountable. But in the meantime, you have all the violence going on against all these drivers, you have all the problems of people trying to get up and down the strip. Yeah, that's our moneymaker, right? Our tourists. So trying to get people from one side of the strip to the other side of the strip is a priority for these drivers, you know? So yes, they want to be, to make sure that, you know, what they're saying is not falling deaf ears. And again, everybody's just stone-faced. But, I mean, I know everything goes on the record. I know everything, I would hope that everything gets reviewed. But again, accountability, and it's right there on your guys', on your guys' banner. I mean, it's, there's not much more I can say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to be clear, we don't sit here stone-faced because we don't care. It's because of the constrictions that have to go along with public comment that are statutory. So it isn't because we don't care.
Excuse me. Good morning, Commission and Board. Kevin Schubert, Vice President, TransDev. I'm the one ultimately accountable. I want you to know that there's a lot of effort. I mean, November's come with some, several challenges, but there's been a lot of effort behind the scenes with the whole team. And I want to recognize the operations team, because they are working their tail off to get this right. We're meeting with the union. We have our labor management meetings. Many of the issues that have come up, particularly the PTO, I want you to know, were addressed in our meeting yesterday, was brought up in the prior meeting two weeks ago. We're meeting regularly until all these things are resolved. I do want to also acknowledge Brian. I'm very sorry to hear of Brian's scenario. I will commit to meet with him weekly until that issue is resolved 100%. I apologize for that. It was my understanding that that was resolved, but I will be in that until it's done. But just want to assure you that we are working through this as best as we can. There's been a lot of challenges. I think we've got the right progress. We work regularly with RTC staff to make sure we are getting better every day. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? If not, Mr. Nimrod will be our last speaker.
Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. Justin Jones, and ladies and gentlemen. Lovely Mayor Carolyn Goodman, you are an extraordinarily good woman. And beloved MJ, you are not only an angel to me and many others who are here, but in 2010, you were recognized by the Safe Community Partnership Program as the Safe Communities Angel of the Year. And to that I cheer. And to the entire hard-working RTC community family, I say from my loving heart for you, may God and Christ in you, through the new year and beyond, make your pleasant dreams come true. I will also add that Nathan Goldberg is doing the best he can with what he has. And so far, he's doing a great job. I know I kind of blasted him last time, but he's got a, he's doing a good job. All right. And my heart hurts for UNLV and that tragic man, that tragic shooting on November the 6th. It really hurts, you know, because I love UNLV. And the two officers who were passed, Abate and Falez, some beautiful funerals on, and I don't usually look at funerals, but you notice, they have lives. I mean, I like to see the person behind the badge, and it was very, very touching. So, thank you very much for listening, and have a happy new year, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Nimrod, and same to you.
Oh, yes. My name is Eric Melchizedek Christ Nimrod. You can find Nimrod in Genesis 10th chapter, the 6th to the 10th verse.
Thank you, sir. And I wish happy holidays to the board, to the senior team here, and to everyone in the audience. Thank you all for what you do.